All righty, welcome to July 18th special meeting of the County Board of Supervisors. We will now have a moment of silence, silent reflection, or silent prayer, and I hope everybody will remember Jim Christensen and their prayers, who's in the hospital getting treatment, so if we could have him and thoughts. Thank you Supervisor Dean, will you lead us in the flag sleeve?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we've got a roll call please.
Supervisor Gardia.
Here.
Supervisor Dollywall.
Here.
Supervisor Dean.
Here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
And Chair Canepa.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will have discussion and possible direction to Public Works due to the interruption of residential waste collection by Republic Services to allow... I think after we... you want public comment now, or public comment after?
It's up to you, we do have it first, but you can do it during the discussion if you want to.
Okay, so we'll open it, and then we'll have you talk to why you had the special meeting, and then we'll open it to the public, and then we'll come back for Supervisor Public's comments. Republic Services to allow affected residents to dispose household waste at county facilities free of charge for the duration of the interruption. So, as a lot of us in city and counties throughout have had interruptions, and we've been getting a lot of calls to each one of our districts, and so I think everybody is well aware of the problem that we're having. It's obviously a labor dispute, which is a private matter between the company that we contract with. So Supervisor Gardia was asking to call the special meeting to order today to address some of the issues that he's dealing with, and what Republic's done, and they're offering, I guess, their landfill, and what people can do if they want to get rid of their own trash, and possibly if the county could do it, and how we could do it. So, at this time, I'll open it up to Supervisor Gardia, and you can have the floor and explain, and then we can open it up to the public for people that have anything to ask. The floor is yours.
You know, as being part of labor for many years, I know what disputes are, and I've been part of a strike before when I was a breadwinner. You know, I actually, it's a learning process for me, I really feel that in the future, that me as Representative District One's going to jump on this a little sooner. We're having issues right now, and we're, you know, businesses aren't able to do, conduct business because they have garbage piling up, their recyclables are piling up in the back of their businesses. Just today, I had two of my neighbors stop in my yard and asked me what we're going to do about garbage, and I know that there's, we had sent something out a couple days ago as Republic gave an option to go out to their landfill facility and dump free of charge. But I think that if we have the opportunity to have other options, I think we should explore it. I've talked to Public Works about it, I wanted to open up, and I appreciate the Chair bringing this up and getting everybody here on a Friday afternoon to discuss this, but it's a, it's a major issue right now, a lot of, in District One, we, you know, some of our areas, we have stray cats, stray dogs, you know, people are being told to put their bags of garbage next to their garbage cans, they're being torn open, garbage is all over, you know, the neighborhoods, so I'm glad we're in a position that we could at least discuss some options. Hopefully, the Labor Resolution gets taken care of soon, but I think moving forward, we gotta, we gotta treat this as if we're not going to have a resolution anytime soon. Because even, even if they are able to come back to, or get in a position to have a contract, there's going to be a delay of service until, they're going to have to have time to get caught up, so that's why I'm bringing this up for discussion. You know, if it's a voucher system, or if it's the ability to put bins in some of our, you know, where in the past, we've had community cleanups, you know, if there's other options out there, it gives us opportunity to explore.
Perfect, so at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Now is the time for public comment on only those matters listed on the special meeting, which is obviously about the trash. We request that you fill out a comment form if you address the board in person, there's a time limit of three minutes for these comments. There is a device on the podium with a green, yellow, and red light, the yellow light will come on 30 seconds before the end of the three minutes. With regard to public comment, the law strictly limits the ability of board members to discuss matters not on the agenda, so this is not an appropriate time to have discussion with the board regarding your comments. We ask that you refrain from personal attacks during your comments, and that your address will, all comments to the Board of Supervisors, not to the audience. Comments from the public may not reflect the viewpoint of the Board of Supervisors. At this time, do we have any cards?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I see a representative from Republic in the audience, maybe, you know, if she can give us an update on the negotiations, I think that'd be helpful.
Sure, that's, is there any cards, do we have cards?
At this time, Chair, there are no cards, I would just look to the audience if anybody wants to speak, but I'm not seeing any, so I would turn it back over to you.
We'll be nice, don't worry, we'll be nice, so that, just so you know, we're not going to throw anything at you, so, but any update that you could give us would be greatly appreciated.
How do I turn this? I'm good, okay. Hi, everybody, Sina Thompson, I'm the Municipal Manager for Republic Services here in Stockton. I don't have specific updates, the last update I had, they were in negotiations well into the night, I think a little past midnight last night, so we are hoping to have resolution soon. I know that they have come to agreement on some things, and again, I don't have the details on that, so I know we do plan to resume service immediately as soon as, you know, we are able to come to an agreement, but we're hoping that we can soon. That's all I've got on that right now.
Okay, perfect, so if you could just stick around if there's any other questions that the board has after public comment, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Anybody else wishing to come on up and speak about trash? So, I mean, one of the biggest things is, we talk about it with you guys, is what, what does breach of contract with our garbage haulers come in, and I mean, this year, Supervisor Dean put out a, you know, for Area C, the amount of work that we've done towards, you know, fixing garbage contracts and the length of the time that the RFPs have been out, and so I think as a board, we've been very proactive in dealing with these issues and getting the best rates for our taxpayers and the people, and bringing some, you know, good, good solutions to making it, the trash pickups and the, how the county does it. I want to commend Public Works for the work that you've done, and I thank you so much in keeping us in track, and Republic, and we call, and I called Mike Akem, and we've all been doing our share, but I mean, we all, we all share the same struggles because a lot of us have our garbage sitting out in front of our house also, so if you could speak to that about what you guys have been doing and learning, and how the breach of contract, and possibly what the county can do to solve or help, you know, make it a little easier on the people that possibly can take their dumps, their trash to the dump, and maybe some alternatives would be, would be appreciated.
Sure, we have a specific proposal we plan to present for you today, but we can certainly discuss other options. Technically, Republic's embraced their contract now because it requires a weekly collection, and that, that hasn't happened for some times, and there's also other things we can do if there's three, a continuous break in service for 72 hours or more, and that hasn't been breached, but, so there, there are some things we can do to, if this strike isn't resolved soon, things we can do to resume normal service. For example, bring in another vendor, but we're, we're, hopefully it doesn't come to that. We do have a voucher program that, you know, we're going to propose for the board's consideration this afternoon, and we could talk about other options if there are other ideas that could help mitigate some of the impacts to our customers.
Okay, what's the wish of the board, do you guys want to ask questions first, or let them do their presentation, or what would you guys? Supervisor Rickman?
Fritz, what's, what can the county do when it, a public health issue? I mean, does it fit the definition of a public health, and regardless if it does or doesn't, it is?
This is, this, we consider this a public health issue, a growing, you know, that's an issue now, but it's growing.
So, I mean, you look at pest infestation, bacteria, you know, virus, disease, whatever, I mean, rodents and stuff like that, so what, what special powers does the county have to address something like that? I mean, I know you just mentioned it, but something more of a, I'm looking at something more of like an aggressive scale to eliminate the public health.
Well, a local emergency could be declared, OES would probably bring that forward, that would bring, you know, give certain powers and authorities to the board they don't normally have, emergency contracting and things like that.
Well, our OES director, I mean, or the person at the top of the food chain is our chair, so we don't need, I mean, our, this board can declare, we don't need OES to do anything.
Right.
So, I mean, why wouldn't we do something like that?
We, we certainly could do that, that's within the board's authority, yes.
So what resource would be available if we did do that?
I'm not an expert in emergency services, so I...
I expect you to be an expert on everything, Fritz.
I know, I know there's some emergency contracting powers, you have some additional, you know, flexibility there, I can't speak to it comprehensively, though.
All right, well, thank you, you know, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we went through months and months going back and forth, putting this out for bid, which hadn't been done in decades, I don't know if the, the two new members realize that. We ended up in Area C coming up with a new contract with Waste Management that'll save rate payers about 45% when they finally take over January 1+, extended services, and my conversations with Waste Management as far as, and Tom Vanessa, thank you very much, they're going like, why are you calling me, this isn't our, but I needed some guidance on, on steps that could be taken. Their trucks are on order, so it's not like they could just step in early and, and take over that, that route. I'm guessing after what I just saw in Philadelphia this weekend with their garbage strike, I don't think this is going to be a, a long-lived process, so when you talk about OES, I mean, if there's something we can do with vouchers, drop-offs, et cetera, I don't know if you're going to have a company that can actually come in and backfill those routes over the next few days. So, I've been, you know, getting a ton of, of the phone calls too, because Area C is pretty much, you know, all my district, and they've got, you know, possums and cats and dogs, and while we're, we're upset by the volume of calls, I don't want to overextend into funding something that probably is going to take a couple more days to secure. The one, the one message I have been getting out to the residents is, we have this guy from Public Works named David, and it's all his fault, because he's the one that urged us to put it out to bid and contract and went and had to do all the homework, so you get to celebrate on January 1, but for now, it's your fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good, I thought it was mine. It's a buck stopped me.
So, one of the other things that maybe you could talk to, is I don't know if Waste Management is also a union, folks, I don't know that they'd be willing to cross a union line to go and pick up other folks' garbage, so I think that is one of the variables that they, and I don't know, it's not, it's not my wheelhouse, but I think that's one of the prohibitors, and then if you do have another hauler do it, they have to take care of their own customers first, when would they do it, on weekends, and I mean, so that would be a whole nother, and I don't know if you're getting into that. Do you guys have any more questions before we have their president, Vice Chair Dollywall?
Sina, can you please come to the lectern? Thank you.
Yes.
Please correct me if, if I'm wrong, my questions are just for clarification.
Okay.
According to the information I have, that the local 25 in Boston is actually on strike, and all the other locals are striking to support them. Is that correct?
From what I understand, yes.
And the next mediation is scheduled for July 30?
That, I don't have any information on what's going on with Boston, I do know...
So, but your employees, here, they are under contract though, right?
Correct, so our landfill employees are currently in negotiations, and that's where the issue is, our drivers, this is not for our driver, our drivers do have existing contracts that don't expire for a few years, and so, but because the landfill is striking and in negotiations, they won't cross those lines, so it does, it did stem from there, and I am not sure, so I don't want to speak, you know, out of turn or give, but how the landfill employees were brought into it since they are currently in contract negotiations.
So, your, your drivers are on strike because they are supporting the landfill employees?
Yes, partially, yes, again, everything initially stemmed from what was going on in another state, but I think because the landfill is, they are in support of them as well.
How many employees at the landfill?
I believe 35, that would be in the union, I know there's more than that, but some are non-union.
So there, so there are negotiations taking place at the local level, correct?
Correct.
And if that settles, the chances are that they will start the service back?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Supervisor Gardia?
So Republican and Teamsters 439 are currently in negotiations right now for the local?
Yes, for the landfill, yes.
Okay, so, so we are affected through the negotiations here?
Local also.
Correct, correct, and, and, you know, my, my thought is, like I said, I apologized earlier, I think we should have jumped on this, like, just as a penalty plan, do we, does Republic have a penalty plan for situations like this, if your drivers would go on strike? Do you have a backup plan?
We do, we typically bring in resources from other cities or states, other drivers, Republic employees to assist, but because this has affected other business units as well, those resources have been limited. So while we have had some come in, and we do have trucks out on the road to service all of our contracts, it's been minimal because of, this hasn't impacted other, other units.
When you say minimal, do you, do you have like a, like a percentage, 10% staffing right now?
Yes, maybe around 10% of drivers, and it, it varies every day, just depending on what is available, I do know today and tomorrow, we've had a little bit more than we've had earlier this week, last week we did have more as well, this week was a little bit lower, so again, it just depends on what is available that they can send out to us.
Is there, is there any type of priorities of who gets service and who doesn't?
For, in general, residential or...
Residential.
Residential, we are trying to work through, I mean, I know that they have been going by service day, so I believe we got first resources in, like Wednesday, and so they tried to catch up, you know, Tuesday residence and going so forth, as far as commercial, I know that they are focusing on like hospitals and nursing homes, and, you know, apartments or restaurants as we can, and escalated, you know, calls that we receive as well.
And I know you're the messenger, and I don't, I'm not trying to, by no means, our office is getting blown up, and it's, it's, it's become a priority for us, and we're just trying to come up with some solutions, and I, and I, you know, I appreciate, you know, you guys opening up the landfill and, and as an opportunity for people to go out there, but it does, you know, we have a lot of elderly people that don't have access to going all the way out to, it's a antique address, and so that's why I, I wanted to bring this meeting up, because we have options with our, with our transfer stations, or, you know, possibility of putting bins out where, where we had, do our community cleanups or something, so that's kind of looking at a backup plan here, if we don't, if we don't have resolution, we got to get ahead of this now.
No, absolutely, and we have, I know, county staff did present, you know, the option as well, and we are completely open to, you know, participating in that, we'd just like to have a meeting with county staff to discuss, you know, parameters and what that would look like, and verification process, we have also offered to drop bins at county landfills as well, and would be willing to dispose of the material there, you know, to, if county wishes, so that is another option as well.
Some of the, some of the questions I'm getting from constituents, is there going to be refund for lack of service?
I, I know that that will be addressed, I don't have what that will look like as far as a dollar or percentage amount, but I do know that right now, all efforts are focused on getting us back up to normal, and they will be addressing, issuing credits.
Just, if you could please tell the people that are watching what the program is in the hours of operation, and how they can go about getting the vouchers to go to your guys' landfill, and then we'll go to the county, so what days you're open, and how people that would like to discard their stuff at your guys' landfill.
Okay, so out at Ford, we do have, Saturday, they will be open from 7:00 to 1:00, Monday through Friday, it is 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They can, it is at our organic site, so right next door to the landfill, I know there was some confusion, we're getting a lot of cars driving in to Scale House, so it's actually next, right next door at the organic facility, but we have containers out there for trash, recycling, and organics, residents can bring that material out, and we have workers that are manning those bins and to assist with unloading, it is free, there is no cost to the residents to be able to bring that out, the material out. This is, right now, we have, we haven't set a deadline on when we will end it, obviously it'll remain open as while we're working through negotiations.
Is, sorry, go ahead, Chair, is there any way that you can get the message out, are you guys doing any type of campaign or anything out there, you know, social media to let people know that there's options?
We have posted it on our local website, and I do know the information has been sent to City of Stockton staff, City of Lathrip staff, and County Public Work staff, and I have seen them posted as well on their websites or social media pages, so I know that I have seen it, seen it out there. So I know that I have seen it out there.
That was one of the concerns with us and our PIOs is sometimes the misinformation. You guys can't fulfill the day that you're going to go because of the lack of people. So it's hard for us to take a stance at the county.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know what I mean? It's kind of your guys', the city sent it out and it wasn't able to be met, the criteria that you guys had done. So it was hard for us as a county to put out the same information when there's no proof that it's going to get done in the timeframe that you allow. So I think people need to understand the frustration that we're having. We'd love to do it.
No, absolutely.
But there's parameters.
Yep. And we did send, again, the information out to County Public Works staff also.
Okay. All right.
And while you're up here, if I may?
Yes.
So is it a possibility that we could have like a large dumpster dropped off in, say, Lockford, Clements, Marotta, Linden, all the, some of the smaller areas C's to be serviced? Is there a process for that, that Republic could drop them off? I mean, just so they have, especially in these outlying areas that I know the trucks are probably not prioritizing right now because of the density? Is that a possibility?
I think we can definitely work with staff on that. I know that that has been successful in some of the other cities. Some cities did not want us to drop boxes just because of the city and they knew that it would kind of be a free-for-all and people would really contaminate the streets. But it is something that we have done in other locations and it has been successful. So we can definitely talk with staff about that.
Like, do it in a fenced place where you could close the fence at a certain hour and not have free-for-all? Anyway, so, okay, well, thank you for putting it.
You're welcome.
So yeah, if we could go to the county folks and Fritz and David, if you could give us what we could do at the county to help our residents and hopefully offer different hours and possibly a solution until this is solved.
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair Canepa and board members. The item on today's agenda is consideration of a program to allow free disposal of household waste for residents affected by the current disruption of service in a portion of the unincorporated county. Deputy Director David Tolliver will provide a brief background to help inform the board discussion on this matter. And of course, we'll happy to address any questions or ideas the board might have afterwards.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Canepa, members of the board. I'll give a brief introduction to the topic and our thoughts on where we land today. San Joaquin, obviously, county is experiencing a significant disruption in residential waste collection services in refuse service Area C, which includes portions of supervisory districts one through four. Republic Services is currently operating at only fifteen to twenty percent of its normal capacity due to ongoing labor dispute resulting in widespread delays and missed pickups. This situation poses a growing public health concern in the area of Republic Services. In response, Public Works developed a voucher program that would allow affected residents to dispose of household waste at designated county facilities at no cost. On Thursday, Republic Services began offering no-cost access to one of their facilities for trash disposal during the work stoppage. Legally, County Council has identified two potential pass forward for the temporary voucher program. One, if Republic agrees in writing to reimburse the county, we can proceed with the program and present the agreement for ratification at the August twelfth board meeting. And two, if county funds will be used to offset the voucher program expense, the board must adopt a resolution authorizing the program and justifying it as a necessary public expense. Currently, the county and the City of Stockton are actively pursuing the reimbursement option with Republic and Sina alluded to that earlier today. And it should be noted, the City of Stockton has been a key collaborator and a close partner with this effort. In light of the ongoing service disruption, Public Works is prepared to move forward with a temporary voucher program if and as the board directs to provide residents with a safe, legal and accessible way to dispose of household waste until normal service resumes. And that concludes my brief presentation.
Supervisor Rickman, you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to know exactly what this board wants to do. I mean, I think we all agree it's a public health issue. My concern is how long is this going to go? I mean, it's been, what, a little over two weeks now or so? About that time. So how long may this go? Because the longer it goes, the bigger public health issue it's going to be. And then I just think this board and this county needs to be aggressive as possible in order to eliminate that. And now, when you mentioned OES, and by all means, I'm not saying to get OES involved and put up the war room and all that stuff. But I mean, whatever our options are, I know Supervisor Ding mentioned something, Supervisor Gordilla mentioned something. But at the end of the day, how do we eliminate this? Besides of having people go back to work and getting the contract all sorted out, even though it's, that's not something that we're involved in. But how do we eliminate it? I mean, is it going to be like, like you said, put some dumpsters out? And if so, then so be it, let's do it. But we should have a plan also, at least, you know, what if this goes on three, four, five, two months or whatever it may be, then what will happen? And when you mentioned August twelfth board meetings here, so it says the county agreement to be drafted, presented for ratification, we don't have to wait until August twelfth, right?
Correct.
So we can start the process immediately?
Yes. Either way, there's a way to start the process immediately. The ratification on August twelfth of an agreement would be if Republic agrees to reimburse the county for its costs associated with the voucher program. Alternatively, the board could adopt the resolution that's in the package today, start a county facility voucher program today and solid waste enterprise funds would be used.
All right, that's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
My only concern, and I think it's great you're collaborating with the City of Stockton, but this is the Board of Supervisors and I want to make sure that this isn't a Stockton-centric. I mean, obviously, the density is there in Stockton, so that's where they're focusing their resources on pickups. Unfortunately, most of Area C is in Clements and Lockford, Marotta, Linden. And they're feeling left out in the cold. So to me, it's not just volume, it's area coverage. I want to make sure anything that we do addresses the immediate concern of our county constituents as well.
Before I get to these guys, that's one thing that if you did do Harney, you know what I mean? That's out in that area so that the hardship of driving all the way out, you know what I mean? Would be an option. And I think that makes the most sense for the people that can get it out there. I think you opened it up and like you're saying, for those people that are in that area, you're offering something in the north side of the county so that people don't have to drive to a Manticha address. So Supervisor Gordilla.
So I got a question. If we declared a county emergency, would there be any type of reimbursement that would be in place for vouchers? Example?
We'd have to have a discussion with OES on that, whether there's state or federal disaster assistance funds. If the board declared a local emergency, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
And the second one is if we're going to provide vouchers, they're going to go to our transfer stations. If Republic's willing to bring dumpsters and have them there set aside, do we need vouchers? If we use that as a drop-off spot?
So there are some logistical issues with Republic dropping off their dumpsters at our facilities. I don't know that that would be the best and fastest way to get this done. Our focus has been on how much or will Republic reimburse us for the cost of the vouchers? And that's in discussion with the City of Stockton and other cities that are impacted. We've kind of gone as a group together to share with Republic about our concerns that way. Certainly, our Public Works staff are exclusively focused on our residents and making sure that they're served. And issues of route density and timing and lack of service has been foremost on our thoughts. So that's been our focus. We think we can deliver the voucher program today, if the board authorizes it today. And in terms of other measures, contracting with third-party vendors, other vendors that we have a relationship with, Chair Canepa has pointed out some of the complexities with that. That might take us some time to get that done. And we would have to come back to seek another kind of resolution. So maybe a public health resolution so that we can have the procurement and contracting authority to move quickly.
How has the conversation been with Republic in regards to reimbursement?
So as Sina mentioned today, we're not there yet. We've had conversations, but we're not, we haven't reached a final agreement. So they have not said, yes, we will reimburse, been that clear and that specific. We need to continue to have those discussions.
And so, I mean, my thought would be too, in future negotiations, we probably need to put something in the contract that states that gives us a safeguard. If we have an extended lack of service, then we have something to fall back on, so we don't have to come back to this.
Agreed.
Right. And we've sent Republic a letter this week requesting some information on service scheduling and also for, about our desire to have discussion about credits for customers who have experienced delayed or missed services.
Okay, I just have one question. I'll go to Supervisor Rickman. The garbage enterprise fund, what do we have money-wise in there? Because I know that was one of the things that we went on on the SB. And what is it, two eighty-three?
Thirteen eighty-three.
Thirteen eighty-three that we were going down and then we were going to go back up. So does this affect that or do we have enough money to cover a week or ten days of possibly doing this?
We have in upwards of fifty million in our fund, so we could cover this. So we estimate, and again, these are very ballpark estimations, that we'd have maybe two hundred or so folks at thirty dollars a service. That'd be about six thousand dollars a day. And we're estimating maybe five days, that'd be about thirty thousand dollars. So that's something that we can cover. Again, we would, we could cover it out of our solid waste enterprise fund, but we would prefer, we would request, we would want Republic to reimburse us for those services.
I mean, there's just so much uncertainty, right? I think it's sign-up goodwill. We do this because it's immediate and we don't have to wait on somebody. And you know what I mean? It shows that we have our residents' backs, you know? I mean, so Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And this is for our county council. If, as you mentioned, there has to be a contractor, it has to come back to the board. Can't, is there a way this board can give that authority to the chair to go ahead and sign these contracts or implement these contracts prior, you know, coming back to the board? What I'm trying to eliminate is the delay. So I know in like an emergency situation, the chair can have some authority that, you know, he can impose and then it would come back to the board for ratification at a later time. However, until that time comes back to the board, that process can be implemented and put forward. So what I'm looking at is least amount of delay, give the board, give our chair the authority to do some of these actions without beating the whole board, which may be a delay.
Sure. I don't have the statutes right in front of me. We don't have agendized delegating authority to the chair, but I am familiar with statutes going off the top of my head which indicate that if an emergency is declared, there's emergency contracting powers that are provided by very department heads, which then could be ratified by the board afterwards. So if there were a scenario where you wanted to, if this drags on and you wanted to contract with a third party to pick up the trash and it was such that it was deemed an emergency and we couldn't wait to schedule a board meeting to approve that, I believe, again, going off the top of my head, that with an emergency, we could do that contract and then thereafter have the board ratify it. So I think that is a possibility. But like I said, we've not agendized providing that, delegating that power to the chair.
Right.
But I think there's a remedy. And just as long as I'm talking, there's been some discussion about Republic reimbursing us to the extent that they're out of contract. And again, I don't have the contract in front of me, so I'd have to double-check it. But if they are out of contract, we do have some leverage, so to speak, insofar as we could seek damages. Hopefully, in lieu of seeking damages, we can work out an agreement with Republic so as to be made whole if in fact they're out of contract as a consequence of these delays.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Vice Chair Dolewski.
Yeah, the question got answered.
Question got answered. Supervisor Gordilla.
So you're saying is if a motion is made to declare a county emergency, then that would give the authority for the chair to, you know, rally, make a type of decision that later on go back to the board?
We don't have agendized potentially declaring an emergency. There is within the codes something which allows, I think, the public health officer to declare an emergency if the criteria is met. I think the last time it was looked at, it was thought that the criteria was not met, but things have dragged on since then. But we don't have agendized to do that. We could do that with, we could have an emergency meeting, in which case we need one hour's notice. But I don't know that that's necessary. To the extent that somebody needs to declare an emergency, I think, for instance, the public health officer would have that ability if the statutory criteria is met. Keep in mind, if we're going to go down that route, we ought to do so with a objective in mind. What is it that we're declaring a public health emergency for? Do we think we're going to actually run out and try to find somebody who's going to, a third party, who's going to do, who's going to pick up the garbage for us? Is that a viable option? I don't think we just want to declare a public health emergency or any other emergency just for the sake of doing it. I think we should do so with a plan as to what that gets us. But we could do that if it's necessary for the board to do it. We could do it within an hour's notice as an emergency meeting, as opposed to a special meeting, which is what we have now.
Mr. Chairman, is what we're looking for is, I mean, we want our transfer stations, whatever, Harney Lane, to be able to take garbage and we'll figure it out, but authorize it. And then we want some dumpsters put out in the underlying areas for immediate, something that we can do today forward? Is that what we're all looking forward?
County Administrator, can you yield the floor to her, please?
Well, no, you don't need to yield the floor to me, but I just, if I may, through the chair, I just want a clarification, council. Because I believe what Supervisor Ding just explained, I think to get the vouchers, the voucher program going, and I'm not sure about the possible dumpsters, if that's okay with everyone to do, we don't need to declare an emergency, correct? We can do that today?
Correct. We've agendized a proposal to allow free disposal by county residents in our landfills for the duration of the strike. That's what's before us today.
Okay.
And no emergency is necessary.
No. The board doesn't need to declare an emergency. You could do what?
Okay, Fritz. And then does anybody from the public have any comments before we come back? Because I think we're ready for a motion, but go ahead.
Through the chair. We explored two scenarios with the county council's office and the paths differ depending on how it's funded. If Republic agrees to reimburse, we could, as soon as that happens, we can execute a quick MOU with them, begin the program and bring that back for ratification to the board. But as soon as we reach agreement, we can implement it immediately. The second option is if we use county funds, the solid waste enterprise fund, to fund it. And by adopting the resolutions that's before the board, we can begin that program today. So there's no scenario that requires us to wait.
Second one makes more sense to me to get it going so that we, you know what I mean? If we have fifty million dollars in the account.
Thank you, through the chair. I just have one more question. So before the board approves, I just want, can you explain a little bit of how the voucher program would work for the people that are listening out? You know, do they have to come to Public Works? Are they going to be given to the board members? If you can explain a little bit about that.
Sandy, just to make this simple, what do they need a voucher for? They're just open, right? Can't we just say? I mean, they can keep a list at Harney and Lovelace or what have you, but we don't want the residents to have to go get a voucher to, just show up and we'll hand you a voucher.
Right. And we just need to verify that they're residents within Area C, refuse Area C.
So we don't want a free-for-all for everybody to go to the dump?
That's correct. And then, and they can go to North County or to the Lovelace Transfer Station. Those are the two designated facilities that would take the trash free of charge.
And hours of operation at those two facilities are, please? Off the top of my head.
Seven o'clock to... Lovelace facility is seven days a week, seven AM to four PM. North County in Lodi is seven days a week, seven AM to four PM as well. To speak to Supervisor Ding's comment, we would certainly have vouchers printed out at each... at the, at each site, but we'll also have them on the, on our website. Our intent is, you know, should it be, a resolution be passed today, that we would, we would initiate a social media post, that the information would go out. Folks would be able to access our website, print out a voucher, and then just take it to the facility and turn it in as they go.
And put their name and address on it.
And, and we do need to verify it, not verify, but we do need to make sure that they're, they are San Joaquin County resident. That's something that's been made very clear to us by county council, and so their name, their address, and this voucher, and you're off and running.
And then for those who are not, you know, IT adept, they can go and get the voucher at the site. Because a lot of elderly folks who don't have phones and.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
Landlines or whatever. Okay, Supervisor Gardeon, then we'll, we're going to, I think, go to motion.
So, we're, this voucher program is going to be for household items, so the general contractor comes in with a dump trailer, is not going to get a free voucher?
That's correct. It's for a household waste only.
So, so we'll identify that when, when we put our, whatever, to social media, media, and what's been really, working really well for us in District One, and I'm sure other districts, is the text message. There's been, it's been a really, really good resource to get the information out through, via text, so.
And then, hold on, I got one more question. Because the word household, the word household waste, because we're supposed to take our pizza, put it in the green wasted. When you say household waste, is it going to be everything but recyclables, and is it going to be our green that's got our food, and then the garbage too? So, both, correct? The empty yogurt container and the pizza box.
So, I don't know that we're going to be inspecting it that closely. What I'll say is, you know, your lawn clippings, your recyclables, let's leave those at home right now. But your, your typical household waste, your municipal solid waste, bring that to us.
Okay. All rules are off. Bring everything but.
Vice Chair.
David, when you say, as long as they live in San Joaquin County, does that apply to the cities, or just unincorporated?
Unincorporated.
And how about businesses in, unincorporated, like restaurants?
So, this is a residential program, and so that's, that's our focus on residential customers at this time.
Why can't we add the businesses?
The county's not involved in the contract with the businesses. Those, those contracts are between the hauler and the business themselves, so the county's not involved.
Okay.
The way the commercial contracts work, if Republic is one of, is one of our contractors, but there's, there's other contractors that are available as well.
There's a certain contractor for the restaurant contracts. Okay, that's fine. No, no, that's fine. Now, we got a, you have a question?
And taking backing off of what Supervisor Dolewski was saying, so our commercial businesses aren't affected right now, is that what you're saying? Or are they affected?
So, they, they can be affected if they're a Republic.
But we don't know that. But if they are, I mean, wouldn't the same process apply? I mean, because I think that's the last thing we want, say it's a downtown or unincorporated business, and they, a restaurant, they have tons of trash every single day, so why would we not include them in what we're talking about now?
So, again, our, our focus has just been on residential, not, not focused so much on commercial.
We focused on residential because we contract with the service provider.
Right. But if we, but if we're contract, but we don't, what I, what you just said, we don't know if we're contracting with businesses, right?
We are not contracted.
We are not. Okay.
Businesses contract. The contract, on the commercial side, the, the contracts are between the hauler and the business, and the county's not involved.
And some of those have big dumpsters. I don't know where you.
Okay. I just wanted to see clarification on that.
There, yeah, so, and I think through the, I'm not sure who, who on the speaker, am I blinking?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just through the chair, I just want a clarification as to what our intent here is, and I probably misheard this. The people eligible to dispose of household waste for free, did you indicate it's just those who reside in the unincorporated parts of the county, or it'd be any resident of San Joaquin County?
Unincorporated. I'm not sure where that went off. In unincorporated county, Area C service, refugee service, Area C residents, those are the ones affected by the work stoppage.
With Republic service.
With Republic services.
County Administrator Rollard.
Just because the way we have it worded, it just indicates that you have to be a San Joaquin County resident, and just as a, and just by way of example, I'm a Stockton resident, and my service has been interrupted. I'm not, I don't know, I don't, I don't think I'm Area C, but.
But once Supervisor Gardeon makes his motion, he can clarify, because that's just the recommendation, right?
If we're changing, we should change it on the resolution itself, but that can be done pretty, depending on what the change is fairly quickly.
That's correct. The resolution, you're right, the resolution does say San Joaquin County residents affected by the service disruption. It doesn't specify unincorporated, but whatever the board's desire is, we can make that change.
I have one real quick question before we do that. So, the other concern was, was the whole public health thing, and Gina just brought this, because it's not actually a public health emergency, so when does it become that, where Dr. Park would, you know, say, "public health"? So, where is that? Does that even make any difference? I mean, because, right, we still have to figure out who's going to pick up the trash on off days that they're not picking up their own trash, and who would go past, right? So, I mean.
Dr. Park would make that call.
That's, that's a call that Dr. Park in the Health Department would make. It doesn't affect the board's decision on this item today.
Okay. All right, right. So, that's not, that doesn't come in our wheelhouse, then?
Not at this point, not at this time.
Okay, Supervisor Gardeon?
I, I actually got a concern of just unincorporated areas. I believe that, you know, we represent city also, that also reside in San Joaquin County. It's, it's a health issue for them. I don't, I personally like how the, how it's written, and what would be the challenges for not to cover our city?
Well, we're in coordination with your city of Stockton government folks who collect their tax revenues. We want to make sure our county tax revenues are taken care of our county folks that are paying for it. They have their own government entity. Our, our county residents don't. We're it, so.
So, the other part is it's a gift of public funds, so I mean, if we start doing that, is that where that comes apart? So, I mean, there's a health issue, say, hey.
In my view, we don't have an issue with gift of public funds, whether this resolution covers all San Joaquin residents, or whether it covers just San Joaquin residents in the unincorporated area. The bottom line is, public health is affected, and so I don't see that as a, as an issue that dictates we need to go one direction or the other.
One, if I could, through the chair, one thing for the board to consider is that the city customers, and the city of Stockton, the city of Lathrop, served by Republic, they, Republic doesn't bring their trash to our landfill, so they're not normally our customers, our landfill customers. They take it to forward. In the unincorporated area where Republic collects, they bring it to our facilities as required by county ordinance. So, they are, they are serviced by different facilities, non-county facilities in the cities.
Gotcha. So, their trash goes from the cities to their landfill.
That's correct.
Our unincorporated trash goes to our landfill.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, the trash is not intermingled, and that's partly why they questioned, so.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I mean, they do, they also have an option to go out to Republic and dump out there at their, at their landfill. So, I'd like to make a motion to, to go off your second recommendation with regards to reimbursement as a, as a option, if we're able to achieve that.
That's correct. And that's the way the resolution reads, Supervisor, that we would continue to pursue the reimbursement. And Supervisor Gardeon, can you add to that? That in the, the unincorporated towns that have community service districts, which would be Lockford, Clemens, Lindenrod, that bins be placed in those communities?
Correct, yeah. I would ask as an option to look, have, to look at different.
Look at it, let's just tell them, take them out there.
All right. As Supervisor Ding said, that's part of my motion.
Just clarification.
Is that, is that additional direction on top of the resolution, or do you want to incorporate it to the resolution, in which case we need to spend a little, a few minutes to edit it?
A few minutes to you.
Take a break? Five minute break?
You want to take a five minute break?
That might be good. And, and just so I understand, the, your motion was not, was to make this apply only to residents of unincorporated San Joaquin County, is that correct? Okay, so I need to make that, I need to amend this a little bit for that purpose as well.
Yeah, unincorporate, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The only question on that part is how do we monitor who, are you going to have it where it's not, that's the only question. Then it's a free for all, so you put out a dumpster.
Kind of like a Dropbox for balance.
I mean, it needs to be somewhere where it can be policed. I mean, and that's the hard part, because at least Harney Lane is out close enough to those folks. I think that that would be an option. I don't.
And I think, I think that's something we'll need to work with Republic on too, so maybe that's the direction, is to work with public, with Republic to implement, you know, deploy dumpsters at selected locations in the rural areas.
Yeah, that's true.
I just want to make sure that we're not talking, every time we talk about something, it takes months, and we're talking about garbage stacking up, I want those dumpsters out there. And even if we have to use our garbage 50 million fund, and then we have recourse to go, to go back to Republic, we got to get those dumpsters out there now. So, whatever means.
Should we put that language in there to negotiate, hopefully with Republic in those areas, that people have dumps?
Take a five minute break.
Okay, five minute break.
Oh, shit.[1316.83]
All righty, we're gonna reconvene from the recess. We were going to clean up some language on a motion, so I think we're there, so Supervisor Gardea, you have the floor, or County Council, do you have the floor?
Yeah, let me just, um, clarify what, what my discussion's yielded. Uh, Public Works is, on second thought, thinking, as a practical matter, trying to verify whether or not residents seeking to drop off refuse, or within unincorporated or incorporated San Joaquin County, is not gonna be practical, and as a consequence, they're recommending the language that we have, which basically makes the service available to all San Joaquin County residents be left as is. Um, and then the second thing, so, we, depending what the board's wishes are, we can do that. And then with respect to the debris boxes, and trying to incorporate that into the resolution, the language, uh, we've come up with is an additional, be it further resolved, and it would read as follows, be it further resolved that Public Works be directed to engage with Republic to deploy debris boxes and dumpsters at agreed locations in refuse service Area C. Um, they've explained to me, they may, they don't really have debris boxes or dumpsters, or at least probably not sufficient number, so rather than them deploying it, they'd have to work with Republic and, and have, and hopefully have Republic agree to, to deploy these debris boxes and dumpsters. So that would be the, the recommendation from Public Works as to how the existing resolution should be amended.
So one area of hope would be that all the people that are in the county can go to the landfill now, so that would alleviate some of the problem that you're talking about. And then working it out with Republic for something that we don't have in concrete, how we would do that service, is something that you guys would be negotiating.
Correct, and, and the Republic representative today expressed a willingness to have that discussion with staff.
Is that okay with everybody?
Well, just, I don't mean to push the envelope, when, when you say willing to have discussions, do you think that's a pretty realistic, we'll, we'll get some boxes out there and?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, yeah, I don't want to authorize discussion, I want to authorize action, so, okay.
So we have a, a first, so that was, oh.
Second.
Go ahead, you're the motion, Eric.
I'm gonna resend my original motion, and, uh, make the motion, uh, adopt the County Council's recommendation.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
We have a first and a second?
So we need to do roll call vote real quick. Supervisor Gardea?
Aye.
Supervisor Dollywell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding? Supervisor Rickman?
Yes.
And Chair Canepa?
Yes.
That passes five-zero.
Very good, so, um, thank you Supervisor Gardea for bringing this forward and having the special meeting, and thank you, fellow supervisors, for showing up on a Friday afternoon to show that we care about garbage, so thank you very much, and thank you, staff, and thank you for the people in the audience that showed up today, so.